Okay, welcome back to the afternoon session of the February 4th, 2025 Landmarks Preservation Hearing. We have two items to go, and Corey will take us through.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bland. We'll resume with public hearing item number three, LPC 25-04398. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1393, Lot 1, 1 East 78th Street, the New York University Institute of Fine Arts, formerly James B. Duke Mansion, individual landmark also in the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. This is a Bozart-style house designed by Horace Trumbauer and built in 1909 to 1912. The application is to install a barrier-free access ramp and lift.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So, good afternoon. As I've heard the introduction, we're here on behalf of New York University, our client, that has--
Did you state your name?
Juan Matisse, Architect, Matisse Architecture.
Thank you.
Apologies. As you can see, the building is this wonderful individual landmark at the corner of Fifth Avenue and East 78th Street. The historic photo and the current photos taken a couple of months ago will remain unfazed by the proposal. The goal is to install an accessible lift and improve the accessibility or provide ADA-compliant accessibility to the building. The building is located at 78th and Fifth, as I mentioned. It has this wonderful entrance and a depressed areaway around the perimeter of the building, both along Fifth Avenue and along East 78th Street. In investigating the opportunities to provide this accessible path, we obviously looked at seeing if it was even remotely possible to do at the main entrance, which in fact, what we determined with New York University was that that would have been quite a substantial impact to the building. And not only that, but even the existing steps and colonnade and the landing at the top of that does not really have appropriate clearances to even do it in a minimally disruptive way. Investigating the site, we identified that there's an areaway on the east side of the building, which is identified on the sheet within that bubble. And along the top are photographs of the front facade. The photo in the center at the building from sort of the sidewalk vantage point or the public way, and the sort of dark area that is between the Duke House and the residential building to the east, which identifies the potential of this proposal. The photograph on the left is fundamentally quite important because that is the opening in the parapet that you see in the photo, which is on bottom right-hand of the plant, which is how that sort of service entrance, the road inside entrance, is accessible from the side. The balustrade is interrupted at that one point with that gate, and that is the vantage point there. The photographs at the top and also on the subsequent slide are because currently the building is scaffolding and have been for many years with some restoration work that is happening actually adjacent building. And so, we wanted to make sure to get by staff that we were able to see what it looks like, obviously, without the scaffolding and identify the space between the buildings, which on the top right-hand photograph is pretty clear to sort of show the width of the space between the buildings. And then, of course, the bottom right-hand, even though it's scaffolding in place, that same gate location that allows the accessibility path that we're proposing today. In looking at the existing conditions, that areaway now in the photographs and the plan that you see here, today, there's a series of steps that descend down to the areaway. You see them in the photographs at the top. And there's a vantage point of that full areaway with some of the materials that are temporarily being stored in the areaway at the bottom at the lower elevation. And the door that has actually been targeted to have egress in the central photograph, and you can see that in the image here, that's the location. So, we're basically going from sidewalk above this area. There's a vault and other sort of complex subterranean spaces. And the idea is to then work our way to be able to enter the building at this location. And the photographs sort of try to complete a sort of full picture for you. In section, that same area that you see here, we are at the sidewalk, we descend. This is the current conditions to enter the building. There also is a set of doors that also access the residential building below grade here. And this is the location with that balustrade, the amount of space between that point and everything else that we're looking at, which is that flat areaway and our targeted set of doors are here. Our proposal is to introduce a lift between the top of the sidewalk elevation and the lower elevation. It's about six feet. As you can imagine, the ramp would have been pretty substantial. It's very invasive, in fact, almost too circuitous to even consider. And so, the proposal is to elegantly update the steps here, introduce a new ramp that actually allows us to then get further back from the front elevation and at some comfortable point where we can actually go back and use the stairs that are currently in place to get back to the vault areas, identify a landing space that then allows us to distribute both the able-bodied deliveries or egress from the building. So, we had to introduce this lift, but obviously maintain all the inbound and outbound traffic for egress, deliveries, everything else that you can imagine. And so, the lift then found a nice sort of spot here that allows us to then take the last three and a half feet or so of descent while the ramp allows us to come 40 feet from the building, probably mine and the balustrade, that the lift is less than the difficulty of the proposal. Here again, some photographs for reference and a sort of enlarged version, so you can see the pathway for the, from sidewalk to that midpoint. In reconstructing the ramp, the steps that are there in granite are needing to be demolished. So, essentially, the ramp will be starting at that point over here. This gate element and would be slightly modified since the ramp would be sort of taking off in its downward descent from that location. But from the public way, you would still see that historic guardrail, that element and the granite piece there. And of course, from here down, you would start to sort of have the proposal of the new ramp and how it goes down to that landing. The work does not modify any of the existing facade on the historic building, but it does have modifications to the granite wall and the steps that we hope to reuse to reconstruct the portions of the stairs that are also part of the pathway. So, this section is sort of not through the ramp, but through the adjacent steps. That's the same landing that the ramp arrives at. And so, we're using the granite steps from the demolition or removals to carefully reconstruct then the steps that go down. You won't see these from the street, but it'll be nice, obviously, that we're going to reutilize as much of the material, historic material as possible, and then copy that with other granite components to complete the steps that then descend to the landing area that is our path. So, the landing here is elevated. We have a subtle ramp here, but when we're able to access the building at this location. And this is the sort of last of the detail images. Unfortunately, because of the nature of changing from slope of steps to a ramp, we're not able to utilize this guardrail or rail system. But we will be providing a new version of that that is slightly more contemporary in its nature and sort of the language of that. And if we are able to, based on the slopes, we're estimating that it may be possible to modify some of that and actually reinstall it in the portions of the steps that we're recreating on our way downward. So, it's kind of close geometry, but as you can imagine, we're going to try to reuse as much of that as possible. These are details of the components of that that will need to be removed and recreated for the ramp slope. There's also other handrails that are being attached with very simple connectors to the adjacent surfaces to complete the sort of steps to that. And this is the portion that we're sort of gonna be able to maintain at the top of the invisible from the public thoroughfare. The lift itself is sort of your typical mechanism that we hope to select the sort of standard light gray finishes for it, so it sort of blends in with the rest of the granite and the surrounding architecture. And there's a couple of places where we're putting some footlights to just address sort of the nocturnal access to this building, because a lot of the activities at the building will be for night use or events, et cetera. So, the path will be sort of treated in a way that is fairly consistent with what we'd expect within the evening. That sort of concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, sir?
Got nothing to do with landmarking, but how'd you get this by ADA? I thought we were supposed to go in like main entrance or at least the main floor.
We will be going, we will be advising NYU to discuss this, but we wanted to make sure that this was viable through the Landmarks Commission first.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? We can go to anyone wishing to give testimony who's sitting in the room. If not, I'll ask Gregory Kaller to see who's online.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bland. We have a couple of hands raised in our attendees' list. The first we'll be hearing from is Zainab Turan from the Friends of the Upper East Side. Zainab Turan, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please state your name for the record and unmute your line. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Zainab Turan, speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends appreciates its creative and sensitive approach to improving the accessibility at the James Duke Mansion. We fully support the modifications to the side entrance, which prioritize salvaging the granite staircases and minimizing disturbance to the original secondary facade. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from John Graham from the Victorian Society of New York. John Graham, I'm promoting you to panelist now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society of New York. We're pleased to support this application for a ramp and lift to provide access to this individual landmark. The proposed work will have minimal visual and physical effects on the building. The considerable alterations to the main entrance that would be necessary to make it a universe, a universal entrance would likely have been architecturally inappropriate. We agree wholeheartedly with the proposed approach. We suggest, however, that the materials, detailing, and lighting plan for the side entrance ramp and lift give equality commensurate with the historic building. This will help ensure that the new entrance provides an experience as close as possible aesthetically to that of the historic entrance. The presentation provides little information about the details and materials proposed, except for the concrete pavement. A good start would be to pave the new ramps, landings, and stairs with stone matching the pavements on sidewalks around the mansion and at its entrance. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Vice Chair Bland.
Thank you. I don't think there's much to respond to, since it's supportive, but you have an opportunity to say anything else you might want. Okay, right, thank you. So, we'll close the hearing at this point. Can I ask Commissioner Lutfi to make a motion? And Commissioner Jefferson to second it?
So second.
All right, the hearing is closed, and now we can discuss this project. Diana, do you want to start?
Sure. I think it's fine. I think it's a necessary project, and they're doing it with minimal removal of historic fabric and located in a service area. So, I think it's, I have no problem with it.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I agree with Diana, and they're reusing the materials. So, that's also fantastic. And it's really not going to be visible, so.
Mr. Master?
Yeah, I agree. They did a wonderful job in providing this ADA, the barrier-free access.
Mr. Jefferson?
I agree. They did a very good job in designing it. The only issue now is the construction.
It's always the issue, isn't it, after we talk? Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. I am curious as to whether or not the folks in the ADA department will give it a green light, because it's, mostly what we see is people striving to get the entrances to be to the main level or in the main door. And this, this one does not do that. I wish them the best of luck, but it seems like it kind of goes against the idea of the ADA law.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree. It's elegant. And I think with the ADA, when you can show a hardship to do the primary, they'll accept something. But I think this is a really elegant solution.
And I would agree. I think if there's a hardship, this is a good example of it. It would absolutely ruin putting a lift or something in the front of this extraordinarily beautiful house. So, let's hope that our decision here today will survive ADA scrutiny as well. Diana Chapin, would you read the--
Sure. The matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, LPC 25-04398, 1 East 78th Street, New York University Institute of Fine Arts, formerly James B. Duke Mansion, Individual Landmark, Metropolitan Museum Historic District. I note that the building's application is a certificate of appropriateness. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work abutting the east side facade will provide barrier-free access to this individual landmark in the least intrusive manner possible with a minimal removal of historic fabric and without eliminating or damaging any significant architectural features. That the work will be located within a service courtyard set back from the front facade, primarily below grade, and largely screened from view by an existing areaway, wall, and fence, and therefore will not detract from any prominent views of the building. That the existing granite steps and decorative iron railing will be salvaged and reused within the new stairs and railings where possible. That the proposed ramp and lift will be simply designed, neutral in finish, and well-integrated into the existing stair assembly, and will have a harmonious presence in the courtyard. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the individual landmark or the Metropolitan Museum Historic District.
Commissioner Ginsburg, would you offer a second?
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right. We'll now move to the last item of the day, public hearing item number four, LPC 25-06002, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1382, Lot 7502, 809 Madison Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a Neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by F.B. &amp; A. Ware and built in 1924 to 25. The application is to create a new opening and install a new storefront.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Robert Bianco with PKSB Architects. I'm here today representing the owners of the retail condominium at 809 Madison Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District. The project is located at the southeast corner of Madison Avenue and East 68th Street. This is a 12-story Neo-Renaissance mixed residential and commercial building seen here in the 1940s tax photos with a prominent two-story stone base, two one-story commercial storefronts fronting onto Madison Avenue and residential entrance on East 68th Street. And what exists today, what exists today is a largely similar configuration with one of the storefronts on Madison Avenue having been altered with a more modern storefront infill, stainless steel and glass infill. And on 68th Street, on 68th Street, the residential, original residential entrance still exists mid-block, and to the east of that, a new storefront was added, approved in 2001, completed, I think, around 2003. And that new commercial storefront was designed to match the historic storefront on Madison Avenue. A similar application did come before the commission in 2016. The rendering on the screen was approved at a public hearing in 2016 with conditions. Those conditions were to limit the new storefront openings on 68th Street to just one opening, and that the details of the new display window match the historic storefront on Madison Avenue. So, that applicant did subsequently submit C of A filing drawings incorporating the commission's recommendations. A C of A was issued in 2020. No work was completed, and that permit expired in 2022. So, the new owners of this retail condominium condominium are coming forward with a new application. We did take, we took into consideration the previous commission's decision. In addition, we looked at other similar conditions along Madison Avenue. These are examples of other mixed residential, commercial buildings with prominent stone bases, commercial storefronts fronting onto Madison Avenue that then turn the corner to the side street and still provide some differentiation from the residential entrance. In plan, existing condition is at the top of the page. These are two separate small retail spaces, each with storefront facing onto Madison Avenue. We would be adding an additional display window for the corner tenant facing onto 68th Street. This is the existing condition, existing elevation on 68th Street, residential entrance in the middle. This is the new added storefront that was completed in 2003. And our new display window would match that, that other additional storefront in terms of details, color, and finish. And seen here, partial 68th Street elevation in relation to Madison Avenue elevation, our new display window, we are proposing to align horizontally the top of the new storefront cornice with the historic storefront surround on Madison Avenue, and vertically, that new window would be centered on the Bay of residential windows above. This is existing photograph taken at the corner, showing the existing condition and our proposed new window. I will point out that this application does not include any modification at Madison Avenue. This is just to add an additional display window on 68th Street, which would match the historic condition. There's no work proposed right now, but the design would allow for in the future, if a tenant did want to replace the storefront, it could be restored to its historic appearance, and all the openings would match. I'll also point out that we are not replicating any of the decorative scroll work on Madison Avenue. This decorative work actually frames placard with the store's address. So, we are not proposing any, any entrance door on 68th Street. So, there's no need to mark address. So, we would not be including that, but otherwise, we would be matching the cornice, storefront cornice detail and bulkhead ornamental grill work. We're showing placeholder signage, six-inch lettering at the sign band, and some vinyl signage on the display windows at Madison. Just larger details showing the projecting cornice, sign band, decorative brushed brass, bulkhead sitting on a new granite base, and just some enlarged details of those conditions. And I will end on the proposed trajectory.
Before I ask my fellow commissioners, they have questions. I have a question.
Yes.
Why did you choose to match, as I understand you did, more or less the details on the new opening down the block on 68th Street, which also, I was a little unclear, also match most of the details on the second storefront end on Madison? Is that right, first of all?
Yeah, the, the projecting cornice matches in terms of its profile, its overall dimension.
Right.
The, I'll try to go back to the existing photos.
Sorry, that's okay.
So, the ornamental grill work at the bulkhead is replicated on the, the new storefront at 68th Street, so we're continuing that.
But your store is on the, is on the corner, so it has--
On the corner, yes.
Has a completely different--
Yes, yes.
So, my question is, why did you choose to--
We chose--
Replicate once further away when you might have replicated the one right next to it around the corner, 90 degrees away?
For a couple of reasons. To allow for in the future for the Madison Avenue storefront to be restored to its historic condition. Also--
Also, that's, that's an altered--
That is altered, yeah.
I didn't understand.
That is altered. Historically, historically, the two on Madison Avenue matched. Yeah. And per the, we looked at the Madison Avenue master plan, which recommends that modern infill be replaced with historic. So, that, that's a goal. In the future, it's not part of this application.
It's just your client. They could do it all at once.
They could. They're choosing not to. This, this application is being made by the landlord?
Good.
Yes, by the landlord. It's not that the application is not by--
Ah, okay. All right, now that I've asked my question, Commissioner Goldblum has a question.
So, just to pursue that point a little bit and be clear, when this was approved last time at LPC, the storefront that you're proposing approved as a part of an application where the unmodified Madison Avenue was also approved?
Yes, yes. And actually, it was presented at public hearing, but it was a much more extensive scope when presented. They included a lot of alteration at the second floor. The previous owners were intending to expand up into the second floor with their retail space. That, that work was approved with some conditions at the second floor, but when they went forward with their filing drawings, they did not include any work at the second floor. They only--
Right, and the approval that we're looking at now--
It did include--
Showed, showed a matching Madison Avenue north entrance or bonding around the corner.
But, but if it's-- The place that Madison Avenue storefront, it would map it all.
Springs Eternal. Thank you.
They're not. We can't force them to do it. Anybody else have a question? Anybody in the audience want to testify? I think no. So, Gregory Kaller is up for his last.
Wow. Big moment. Thank you, Vice Chair Bland. There are a couple of hands raised in the attendees' list. The first we'll be hearing from is Zainab Turan from the Friends of the Upper East Side. Zainab Turan, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Zainab Turan, speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends welcomes a new storefront on this corner. While the proposed storefront design with its brass surround heather and black painted metal griller, grilled footer matches this existing storefront on the other corner of the 68th Street facade and retail too on Madison Avenue, Friends Preservation Committee finds it visually disconnected from the same store storefront on the Madison Avenue facade. This creates incongruity in the building's retail storefront composition. This creates incongruity in the building's retail storefront composition. Therefore, we urge applicants to consider an alternative design for the two retail one storefronts that better complement each other and create a more visually cohesive retail base for the building. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from John Graham from the Victorian Society in New York. John Graham, you are promoted to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The Victorian Society is happy to support the proposed construction of a new display window on the east 68th Street facade of this building. The new opening and infill will conform to work previously approved by the commission, which was never built. The applicants have provided photographs showing that many corner buildings of this age and type with storefronts facing Madison Avenue had display windows on the side street. The photos also show that there's already one storefront at the west end of the 68th Street facade installed after the tax photos were taken. The work will require the removal of only a small amount minimally detailed historic masonry. The head of the new opening will align with the heads of the historic storefronts facing Madison, and the infill will match the historic infill still in place at this building. However, we were disappointed with one portion of this presentation. The earlier approval included replacement of the modern non-conforming infill at the space closest to the corner of Madison and 68th, with infill matching the historic original. This is not shown in the proposal being presented today. We urge that this restorative work be included at this time. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Vice Chair Bland.
You agree. Would you like to respond to the testimony?
Yeah, I, I would just kind of repeat what was, what was stated before and just add that, that the comment about the disconnect was, was a hearty discussion when we presented to the community board, but I think the members of the, the community boards committee also agreed that, that by providing something that matched a historic condition would, would encourage further restoration.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners, before we close the hearing? If not, Commissioner Jefferson, would you offer a motion?
So, so move.
And Commissioner Goldblum, a second. Commissioner, the hearing is now closed, and we can begin our conversation about the problem, the, the application. Commissioner Master, would you want to start?
Sure, I would love to. Yes, I think this is a very reasonable request. Opening this retail display window on this corner is typical of retail corners on Madison Avenue and in this historic district. I think that this display window is well-aligned with the window above. And in terms of the finishes and matching the original historic window, I understand their reason. And I understand that it, there's every expectation that in the future, when the adjacent window is renovated, it will probably match the two other windows. I'll also note that we had previously approved, you know, just, I guess, a regular display window opening here that was even more, shall I say, intrusive than this one. This is a fairly modest request. So I can find this appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
It's a corner, it's a corner of Madison Avenue, and it's a composition. And it, it's, it, it says that, you know, the three windows there they just looks unfinished, incomplete to me somehow, just because of the site. So I, I find it incomplete.
Mr. Goldblum?
Yeah. I think it's clear that the project would be better with the added missing tooth storefront on Madison. The question is that given our, our mandate and our kind of the, the guardrails on our mandates, how do you achieve that effect? So the way to achieve it would be for us to make the judgment that the added window that they're asking for today is inappropriate without the inclusion of the renovation on the front. Now, that's a curious argument to make. You know, I, I think that you'd have to say that the addition of a, of a, of a historically correct window, which matches another historically correct window down the block, is in and of itself historically inappropriate because of the unrenovated other storefront. Could I, could I make that argument? I don't, I think it's a stretch. I think it's a stretch, and I, I don't, you know, I think that's the only way you could kind of hang your hat on, on this, is to, to make the argument that, that the new thing that they're asking for is inappropriate in and of itself because of the missing one that's in existing condition to remain. I wish I could think of that as being a, an acceptably logical approach to take on this corner, but I can't. I think it's a, it's a, it's a cop-out on the, on the hand of the, of the owner, and I think it's unfortunate and, and, and embarrassing, but I can't see a way to rationalizing that, a way to enforce that kind of quid pro quo.
Moving right along, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Although it'd be better if that, the Madison Avenue front was done, I think this is an improvement and appropriate. And hopefully, at some later date, the Madison Avenue front will be done.
Mr. Chapin?
I think that in general, it's both tasteful and appropriate and to both the district and the building. And obviously, I agree with my fellow commissioners that it would be even more so if the additional storefront where, the window were completed as well. But absent any way to compel that, I, I can approve this.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I think within the vacuum that it's been presented, it's appropriate.
And that's, my opinion is, first of all, that a window is appropriate. We've, we've, we've decided that some years ago as well. We're re-deciding it today. The question is, what does it look like? And I'm persuaded as well with the majority that, that matching, matching one, two existing, in, in hopes that the fourth will, will at some point join its appropriate neighbors. And, and maybe the owner will hear this and see how easy it might be to get an approval to change it. So with that, I will ask Commissioner Master to read the motion.
In the matter of LPC dash, oh, I think I have to read it first. Yeah, I'll, I'll read it first, yeah. In the matter of LPC-25-06002, 809 Madison Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District, a neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by F.B. &amp; A. Ware and built in 1924 and 25, application is to create a new opening and install a new storefront. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I further note that proposals for similar works was previously approved by the commission under two separate certificates of appropriateness, but that these permits have since expired. I recommend approval, finding that creating a new storefront opening at the first floor at the corner of East 68th facade will require the removal of only a limited amount of plain limestone and granite, and will allow for greater transparency at the base, which is typical of the historic condition of most corner buildings on Madison Avenue in the historic district. That the new opening will be aligned with the window center lines above and the historic storefront infill along Madison Avenue, thereby supporting the unity of the pattern of masonry openings. That the brass storefront framings with integral black panel sign band, profiled cornice, and grilled bulkhead will relate well to the historic storefront infill along the Madison Avenue facade and match the storefront on the 68th Street facade. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building of the, or the historic district.
Commissioner Lutfi, would you offer a second?
Vice Chair Bland?
I.
Commissioner Chapin?
Hi.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Hi.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Nay.
Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Master?
Hi.
With six in favor and none opposed, and one opposed, the motion passes.
That concludes the hearing for today. Thank you.